Good afternoon, everyone. As we prepare to get ready for the ceremony, I would ask that you remember to silence your phones. So if you'll just take a moment to silence your phones so that we can enjoy the ceremony. We have a few more folks coming in. We'll give it just another few seconds here and we'll actually get started with the program. I'll just take this opportunity to say my name is Leonardo Brown. I am your Richland County Administrator and I'll be serving this afternoon as the Master of Ceremonies for this momentous occasion. Want to make a few announcements for you for those of you who have not been in this facility before. During the event, you have the opportunity to need to use the facilities. They're right outside this door to your immediate right for both men and women. Want to take a few moments here to acknowledge all of our local officials who have come out to be a part of this occasion. So whether you are a city council member, a mayor of a town or a city, a city manager, city administrator, town manager, town administrator, welcome to this event. Also, I want to acknowledge any of our members of the General Assembly, senators, representatives. Thank you all for coming out on this afternoon to support this event. I want to take a few moments to talk about for family members and members in the audience, how we want to deal with pictures. I know you're going to be excited to take pictures with your loved ones who will be getting sworn in. So during the ceremony, we will have the photographer for the county who will be about taking pictures of the ceremony. After the ceremony is completely over with, for all those members being sworn in, you will have an opportunity to come down and take pictures with your loved ones at that time. Also, if there's anyone who would like to interview members of that are being sworn in, you have the opportunity to do that after they've had an opportunity to take their pictures with their loved ones at the end of the ceremony and then they'll be available for any media interviews that may follow. Want to remind everyone that we are live streaming this event and it's also being recorded. So if you don't have that quite the angle that you want to have right now, you can look at the monitors, but you can also have an opportunity to revisit this at a later date if you choose. With that being said, you also have a program at your seat and we are going to proceed with the program as printed. And with that being said, we're going to start by asking Pastor Sammy Wade of the St. John Baptist Church to lead us in an invocation as we start this ceremony.
Let us pray. O my God, we thank you for your grace that sustained us throughout this day. We thank you for our great nation, for our great state, the city, our county. And most of all, God, we thank you for the citizens that make it up. We ask now that you remember the elected officials who have been elected to serve. Give them wisdom to be an effective leader and now strengthen their hands to do the work that is set before them. It is in Jesus' name that I lift this prayer for these servants. Amen. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Wade for that invocation. Now we're going to ask Command Sergeant Major Philson Tavernier for Jackson to lead us all in a pledge of allegiance.
I was going to say stand and then place your right hand over your heart, but you guys made it easy for me. So considering I am in uniform, I'll remain in the position of attention. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and infinite for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. As I open my welcome remarks, want to take a moment to acknowledge Richland County's commitment both to the faith community and to the military as represented by the men and women who are represented here today and joining us for this occasion. We recognize the importance of partnerships and the faith community and the military are huge parts of those partnerships here in Richland County. Want to share a few words with you about this occasion on behalf of Richland County. In addition, I welcome you to the 2023 ceremony to all family members, friends, residents and colleagues who are present with us today, both in the council chambers and online. You are our honored guests. You've been invited to witness a very momentous and sacrificial commitment to public service. And as these men and women today take their oaths, they will represent that momentous sacrifice that we have come to learn many of our officials do for us in our community. As a part of this program, after our officials take their oath of office, there have been opportunities for them to speak to you about their oath of office and their commitment to our community. And starting us off first is District One Councilmember-elect Jason Brannum, whose oath will be administered by the Honorable Councilman Chair Overture Walker.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
And protect.
And protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
Constitution of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you to Chairman Walker for administering the oath of office today. Some of you know that he and I grew up about a mile away from each other, riding the school bus together as kids. Mr. Chair, it's good to be back on the bus with you again. I think. I'm grateful to have my daughters here today. They raised my great-great-grandmother's Bible to my hand as I took the oath. I stand on the shoulders of ordinary people who are giants at heart, particularly my grandparents who grew up in the Great Depression and fought in World War II. Thank you to my parents for a lifetime of encouragement and my great appreciation to my wife, Nellie, who supports me even when I add new layers to life, like serving in this new position. Richland County is a highly diverse county. Our county council is a reflection of that. And while differences of opinion are inevitable, my core hope is that we will navigate those differences with logic, reason, and sound principles, always with the best interests of the people at heart. I am not here to advance personal financial interests or to play puppet to special interests. I'm proud to be a native son of Richland County, South Carolina. Like this county, my roots are more blue collar than blue-blooded. I love this place. Thank you to the voters in Northwest Richland County and to the dozens of volunteers who helped in my campaign. It is a great honor to serve and represent our area and its people in this way. I am committed to continuing my campaign objectives of bringing and building competence, communication, and care to government as we drive Richland County steadily into a brighter future. Thank you.
And next to be sworn in from District Four, Councilmember-elect Paul Livingston, with his oath administered by the Honorable Senator Darrell Jackson.
Never send a few of you with your hands on the Bible and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office which I have been elected.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
The United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Not quite like Brandon here. I'm not doing this. That's, that's just a joke for those who know me all my life. Let me thank Senator Jackson. You know, I'm, you know, I kind of helped get him started in politics. I take a little credit for that, you know? He, he followed me on the school board and I left the school, but becoming a kind of council. So I taught him everything he needed to know about the school board and so that's how he got started. But good afternoon. I want to just take a few minutes and just simply thank some individuals. Special thanks to my family, my friends, coworkers, colleagues, and all for their support over the years. And it has been years. You know, to Senator Richland County District Four who elected me, I'm so honored to continue to serve you. And to those of you who were recently reapportioned into District Four, I certainly look forward to working with you as well. My gratitude has no limits. I'll continue to work for those quality life issues that you value, deserve, and desire to help make our community the great community it could and should and will be. And our challenges can only be solved if we continue to face them together. And that is my plan. You know, I tried to, you know, make my decision in my life by a famous quote from the great Nelson Mandela, who says, "A great leader can engage in a debate frankly and thoroughly, knowing that at the end, he and others' side, he and other side must be closer and thus merge stronger." You don't have to. You do not have to know when to do what you need to do. You don't have to be arrogant. You don't have to be superficial. You must be informed. So I'm so, so pleased to, to, to use that kind of a motto to, to do what I do as a public servant. So I'm looking forward to continue to serve. And again, my constituents, as you know, you can continue to depend on me to do what we need to do to make sure your life is a better life. So again, thank you for the opportunity to serve again.
And next, we're going to have representing District Five, Councilmember-elect Allison Terracio with her oath administered by Van Terracio.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Of this state and of the United States.
Of this state and of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I really didn't prepare anything today, but I come up here to address you all as someone who is very grateful. Grateful for the four years that I have gotten to spend so far in serving District Five. I'm grateful to the people of District Five, not only the people who entrusted me with this office, but also the people that I've gotten to get to know along the way. Many nights at neighborhood meetings away from my family, to whom I am incredibly grateful. I spent a lot of days on my work laptop and then closing that at five o'clock and then opening up my council laptop to respond to emails, to address constituent concerns, and to just tend to the business of the people. Sometimes rather than getting to make dinner with the family, I was, I thinking about this county. I also want to extend my gratitude to the, to my colleagues, both my former colleagues and my current colleagues and my new colleagues. I look forward to working with you all. I am so grateful to the people who work for Richland County at every single level, all the way up and down. I could not do this job if I didn't get to know you all and be, and was able to call and text and email you all to ask you questions and have you remind me of things that I've already forgotten. I want to extend my gratitude to the friends and supporters that I see out here in front of me, people who were here for the first time that I got sworn in, who supported me as a nervous first-time elected official who really didn't know what I was getting into and have stood by me along the way. I look forward to doing the work of the people with all of you as we move forward together. Thank you all and yeah, congratulations to everyone today.
And next, representing District Six, Councilmember-elect Don Weaver, with oath administered by the Honorable Judge Joseph M. Strickland.
Raise your right hand. Lift in the Bible.
Thank you.
Solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help you God.
I do. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, everyone. Well, there's a whole lot of folks in this room that I need to thank, but I'll try to be brief. First, of course, I'd like to thank my family. My wife, Wanda, who stayed with me in this crazy quest after I lost for council in 2014. She supported me and she supported me again this year when I said I wanted to run again. So thank you to Wanda. She organized a lot of her friends to help on my campaign and she supported me. My other members of the family as well, my son Sam, who put up numerous campaign signs and all kinds of weather. The weather was never bad enough for Sam to have an excuse not to put out campaign signs. Can I tell you that? It was raining, it was thundering, it was blowing wind. I'm like, Sam, go put up 50 signs, okay? So he did it. My daughter Anna, who organized her sorority sisters to make phone calls, do postcards. She did a great job. And most of all, my campaign manager Catherine Robinson, who believed in me enough to take on this crazy quest, even though she'd never run a campaign before. And I pleaded with her to please run my campaign and she did. She was part Bulldog and part Drill Sergeant. On the days that I didn't want to go door to door, she said, Weaver, get out there and do 50 houses today. And I did. So thank you Catherine for that. But and I really like to thank Judge Strickland for being here today. I told the judge earlier, I said, Judge, I remember when your dad and I attended political meetings in the 1980s in the Forest Acres City Hall. That's how long I've been involved in politics in Richland County. So it's especially poignant and meaningful today, Judge, for you to be here. I'm sure your dad would be looking down happy today, Judge, at both of us. But now the time to campaign is over and now the time to govern is here. And I look forward to representing all the residents, not only of District Six, but of all of Richland County as we move forward with my colleagues to make Richland County a better place to live and work. Thank you. And now we have Representative for District 11, Councilmember-elect Mr. Jakes Newton, the oath administered by Mr. James B. Watson.
Jakes Newton, please raise your hand, place your hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office in which I have been elected.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And to preserve, protect, and defend.
And to preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
My heart is just filled with gratitude right now. And our clerk was very careful to mention to me on three separate occasions to be brief. So don't worry, I, I got the message and, and I shall be brief. So I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you to people who are here. Thank you to people who aren't here. And thank you to the great citizens of, of Richland County. What, one of the things that I've learned in this role is how much we can do together and how very interconnected we are, even we don't, when we don't see it. And so knocking on doors in Lower Richland, I had an experience that maybe wasn't unique, but just felt like home to me where I would knock on doors and see people that I'd never met and they would say, well, your grandmother was my Girl Scout troop leader. Or people would know my family history better than I do. Or I would knock on the door of one person and they'd be on the phone with another person that I also knew. But it was this idea of this community coming together. And the people here, the people, the citizens of Richland County, the people I served with, we are so important in what we can do together. So I want to say thank you for that. I'd also like to say thank you to my family who is long-suffering. Even if I didn't serve on county council, they would still be long-suffering just because they live with me. And so I appreciate all that they do and all that they put up with. I am really excited for those of you who have known me for a while that my uncle from Virginia, who has a real name, it's, it's James. My uncle from Virginia, who watches every single Richland County Council meeting, sometimes more than once, was able to come here and, and that's what love looks like. And so thank you to everyone. I'm delighted to have the opportunity to serve and I'm so excited about the things that we can do together. I really am excited about the people that I serve with and I feel like we are on the cusp of even greater success. And then finally, I would like to thank three women. And then finally, I would like to thank three women who aren't here, my mom and, wow. One second. My mom and my grandmothers, who instilled in me the belief that I could work and make a difference, and not only that I could work, but that I should work, and that it was my job to work for every change that I wanted to see in the world. And we all stand on the shoulders of giants, and there will never, there really won't, there will never be women like those again. So, wow. You might not see this again either. Thank you again to everyone. I am so honored to be able to serve. Thank you.
Well, I didn't realize that Councilman Branham was going to get up here and divulge state secrets about our days from riding on the bus. But let me just acknowledge many of the elected officials that are in the room today. I know it's too many to name, but I see Mayor Rickaman, along with our partners over the city of Columbia, see Mayor Barry Walker, who's representing Ermo this afternoon, Senator Darrell Jackson, who is here on behalf of the delegation. I also see some former members of council. My predecessor for District Eight, Councilman Jim Manning. If you can't tell, just look at the hair. And I see Councilman Damon Jeter as well. I believe Councilwoman-elect, not Councilwoman-elect, Treasurer-elect Ken Reddub is present this afternoon. And I thought I saw the auditor in here also, but if I missed anyone, charge it. I'm sorry, I'm still living. Councilwoman English, well, Mr. Livingston, I was going to acknowledge all of the county delegation as well, Richard County Council. But all of our, you know, my colleagues on Richland County Council as well. I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge Councilman, City Councilman Joe Taylor, who passed away, I believe, a few days ago. You know, I didn't have a longstanding relationship with Councilman Taylor, but, you know, I interacted with him long enough to say that he was certainly a champion of, you know, small businesses, beautification, and during our conversations, what came across was, you know, his passion for, you know, making efforts to make the county and the city more competitive from a tax standpoint. And whether he and I agreed or disagreed, what I can tell you is that I always felt that he wanted to see the city win. He wanted to see the county win, and he wanted to see the Midlands win. And so with his passing, that creates a huge void in our public square. And I just want his family to know that our prayers and our thoughts are certainly with you. I'd also like to congratulate all my colleagues who were sworn in today. And if I recall correctly, you know, and I don't go around, I guess, counting the election returns, but I believe you all won by pretty sizable margins. And so that speaks volumes as to your character, your vision, as well as your leadership. I also like to congratulate your families as well. Although your names were not on the ballot, however, you know, you feel every twist and turn of that roller coaster call, the campaign. And so just want to acknowledge as far as your efforts, as well as your support of all of my colleagues on council. And I'll just close by saying this, you know, this body, we accomplished a great deal in 2022. And we did it in a manner that was very transparent. And we also did it while being wise stewards of taxpayer dollars. And you're absolutely correct, Councilwoman Newton, there's so much more for us to do in 2023. And as you highlighted as well, Councilman Weaver, the campaign is over, and it's time to govern. And there's a lot more that we can do together in 2023. So again, thank you all for coming out. Congratulations to all my colleagues. And with that in mind, I believe we're going to head up to the fourth floor for the reception shortly after this program. Mr. Administrator, turn it back over to you.
So just wanted, for, again, for picture protocols, for family members, if you want to take pictures with your loved ones here on this afternoon. So if you would just go in the same order in which you did the swearing-in, that would make it a little bit easier. Then after that, please feel free to head upstairs to the fourth floor. Once you get off the elevator, you can't miss the room. It'll be to your immediate right, and that's where the reception will be. And after the members are done with their photos, if there are members of the media who would like to speak with one of the members, we do have our communications team here. Please get with them so that we can do this in an orderly fashion. But thank you, everyone. We appreciate your attendance here. And again, congratulations to all the newly elected members. On behalf of Richland County Council and Administration, thank you all for your attendance and look forward to serving you in 2023.